I'd like to call the Smithfield Town Council meeting on Tuesday, May 20, 2025, to order for no votes in the executive session of the prayer. Lord, as we begin our meeting, we ask you, our guidance, wisdom, help just to work together and through any issues that we may have pursuant to the contribution for the greater good of all involved. So look to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, a true representative of which it stands on recognition under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Emergency evacuation and help notification. In the event that the council chambers has to be evacuated, there are two exits. One to the rear of the council chambers, go through the door stairway to your stairwell to your right and brings you out to the front of the building. Second exit is to my right, your left, and that exit brings you to the side of the building and other set of stairways. Ladies' room and men's room are both located. Rear door up the hallway, men's room to the right, ladies' room to the left. If there should be an emergency, please do not use the elevator. Thank you, Chief, Town Manager. Next item, item number five, receipt of the Budget Financial Review Board Recommendation for Fiscal Year 2026. You all have it, this was put on your chair. I don't know if we, no one from the Budget Review Committee is here?
I'm here.
Oh, yeah, if you want Caitlin, just to... Sorry, Caitlin, you were behind the chair.
Caitlin Shaw, yeah, Finance Director. We just, actually, this is the BFRB's budget, and there, I did put the letter from the BFRB at your seats, so.
And we're scheduled to have a workshop with the Budget Board on June 10th, I believe it is.
Correct, I think it is, yes.
And then we'll be asking them questions, we'll be asking you questions.
Yep.
They won't ask you any questions, Mike. All right, thank you, Caitlin.
You're welcome.
Any other comments?
Thank you.
Thank you, Caitlin. I remember six minutes, move the matter to the April 15, 2025, open session meeting to be approved as recorded. I entertain a motion.
I'd like to move that this matter be tabled until our June 3 meeting because I believe there is a gap in the, in the minutes and the clerk will need an opportunity to investigate that and make sure that the minutes are complete.
Do you have a second on that?
Second.
Any more discussion? Any not alls in favor? Aye, nays, ayes, ahs, ahs. Item B. Item B, move the matter to the April 28, 2025, executive session meeting held pursuant to Rallin General Law's Section 42, 46, 5A1, personnel to conduct interviews to the town manager's position to be approved and recorded and sealed. I'll entertain a motion. Have a second. Any discussion? Any not alls in favor? Aye, nays, ahs, ahs. Item C, move the matter to the April 28, 2025, open session meeting to be approved and recorded. I'll entertain a motion. Have a second. Any discussion? Any not alls in favor? Aye, nays, ahs, ahs. Item D, move the matter to the April 29, 2025, executive session meeting held pursuant to Rallin General Law's 42, 46, 5A5, United State Potential Acquisition of Lease of Real Property to be approved as recorded and sealed. I'll entertain a motion. Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Any not alls in favor? Aye, nays, ahs, ahs. Item E, move the matter to the April 29, 2025, open session meeting to be approved and recorded. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alls in favor? Aye, nays, ahs, ahs. Item number seven, consider to discuss to act upon the following possible appointments and reemployments, there are none. And item number eight, scheduled public hearing on June 17, 2025, to be considered and discussed, act upon amendments to Chapter 60, the Court of Ordinance entitled Municipal Court to be added to Section D and Section 7 entitled Jurisdictions sponsored by Councilwoman Vice President Angela Kabobas. We are going to move that to the July 15 meeting. Can I entertain a motion on that? Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion?
I would just like to mention that I think that at, at the appropriate time, we should refer this to the Budget and Financial Review Board because many years ago, now I think it was almost 10 years ago.
2015.
The predecessor to that board, the Financial Review Commission, did a study as to whether or not it would be economical for the town of Smithfield to collect its own traffic fines, and they determined it was either very close or it was, would not be to the advantage of the town. So I'd like to see what the, what the numbers look like today before we, you know, before we make that decision.
That will be up to Councilwoman Boullister.
Right, so I'll just speak on this. The reason creating a municipal court to cover the traffic tribunal cases and the traffic violations is kind of twofold. The first thing we would of course need to do is have legislation in place allowing us to do so, and the second thing would be to study it and make a determination as to whether or not it's advantageous for the town. So I've been speaking with some colleagues at the Traffic Tribunal in Cranston and some other officials in other municipalities throughout the state who do training on the program and, you know, have some data regarding Smithfield specifically and other towns in general about creating municipal court, things that we need to do to create a municipal court. And a lot of those people have said to me that having legislation in place to allow us to do so would be the first step and then studying it thereafter, a lot of, it seems a little backwards to talk about something in the hypothetical if we don't even have the power to create it. So, so that, that's the reason for the amendment to the ordinance first and then, of course, I think a study and some, some more conversations would make sense.
So we may have a motion on the floor of July 15 to move this to? All in favor? Aye, nays, ahs, ahs. Item B, schedule a public hearing on June 17 to consider and discuss to act upon amendments to Chapter 347, the Court of Ordinance entitled Yard Sales, Sidewalk Sales, Flea Markets, sponsored by Councilwoman Michael Ionati and Councilwoman Rachel Tapi. I'll entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing.
Motion to schedule a public hearing on June 17, 2025, to consider, discuss, and act upon the yard sales, sidewalk sales, the flea markets ordinance.
Second, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, nays, ahs, ahs. Item C, schedule a public hearing on June 17 on the proposed fiscal year 2026 budget. I'll entertain a motion. Have a second. Any discussion? Alls in favor? Aye, nays, ahs, ahs. Conduct a public hearing to consider and discuss to act upon approving a one-day special event license for Weeby Jammin LLC, DBA, Weeby Jammin Events for the Community Event Celebration for the 75th Anniversary of the Smithfield Police Department at 1150 Douglas Pike on the following dates, Saturday, July 26, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. All special events license for Weeby Jammin LLC are subject to compliance with all the state regulations and local ordinances. I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone like to speak? You may not want to speak, but we're going to ask you to speak.
Absolutely. Eric Dolan, Chief of Police, good evening. Yeah, so obviously, many of you are aware, it's our 75th anniversary, 1950, we started as a police agency, and I'm fortunate to be the chief of police during the 75th year. This event is going to be not only an event to get us out into the community, it's also going to be an honor of the 75th anniversary. So there'll be things there for the public to do, take part in, children to take part in free, and then obviously events that they can partake in also, you know, for a cause, but it's going to be a celebration of our anniversary.
So Chief, we spoke this afternoon about this issue. Can you tell the public what Weeby Jammin has done for you at this particular point?
So they've actually done quite a bit for us. So whenever we need anything for fundraising or things moving forward, we receive money from Weeby Jammin. They've just recently have introduced us to individual to assist with the purchase of our new canine unit. As you may or may not know, our current canine is retiring June 30th, so we're going to be, we're actually started the process of a new canine, and she assisted in getting the funds to purchase the canine, which is between $8,000 and $10,000, which we already received the money.
And they gave you a check for?
$10,000.
$10,000. Any questions to the chief? Any discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a second. Any discussion? I got to close the public hearing, sorry.
Thank you.
You can have a seat, Chief. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Alls in favor? Aye, nays, ahs, ahs. Item number nine, licenses, consider to discuss to act upon approving the annual renewal of one holiday license as applied and subject to compliance with all state regulations and local ordinances, AJL LLC, New England Frozen Lemonade. Is everything in order, Madam Clerk? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a second. Any discussion? Alls in favor? Aye, nays, ahs, ahs. Item B, consider approving a one-day beer and wine license for Allen St. Pierre, 42 Douglas Circle, to hold a 90th birthday party on Sunday, May 25, 2025, from 1:00 to 5:00 at the Smithfield Senior Center at One Hawkins Trail, as applied and subject to compliance with all state regulations and local ordinances. Is everything in order, Madam Clerk? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Any not alls in favor? Aye, nays, ahs, ahs. Consider to discuss to act upon a mobile food truck license for Johnson's Shave Ice LLC, DBA, Oklahoma Smithfield, to sell shaved ice from the shack at 260 Harriet Lane, Cumberland, Rhode Island, and the shack to be located at 371 Putnam Pike, as applied and subject to compliance with all state regulations and local ordinances, and food businesses license and a mobile food establishment registration from the Rhode Island Department of Health. Madam Clerk, everything in order?
I just received your establishment registration. We have to go.
I'll entertain a motion. Have a second. Any discussion? Any not alls in favor? Aye, nays, ahs, ahs. Item D, consider to discuss to act upon approving a new entertainment license for SBGP LLC, DBA Rocket 55 Lounge, located at 55 Douglas Pike, and the applies subject to compliance with all state regulations and local ordinances. Madam Clerk, everything in order? I'll entertain a motion. Have a second.
Second.
Alls in favor? Aye, nays, ahs, ahs. Item 10, under old business, planning bought appointment to be determined expired May 2028, we'd like to move that to the June 3 meeting. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Alls in favor, anybody saying aye? Aye, nays, ahs, ahs. Item B, conduct a public hearing to consider and discuss to act upon approving a new Class B Vettical Beveries License for Two Brothers Restaurant LLC, DBA Frank and Johnny's, on the water, 743 Putnam Pike, with the hours of operation to be Monday through Sunday, 6:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m., as applied, subject to compliance with all state regulations, local ordinances, and a copy of the retail license permit and certified, good standing from the Rallin Division of Taxation. Come on up there, Two Brothers.
I'm one brother, I missed him.
Where's the other brother?
He's six.
He's working.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening. Yeah, so I think that was based on our previous hearing, the only thing that I, I needed to get was the good letter, certificate of good standing, and also the retail permit, which we actually gave to the clerk, and with your approval, we're ready to go, whenever you guys are ready.
I do have his retail, I have his certificate of good standing, and the tangible tax.
Yeah, there was also some tangible taxes that you guys discussed with us. We just, we didn't want to prolong the process and hold the city up, so we just said, you know, let's just take care of it, you know.
Thank you very much. You paid that?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Close the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you. And motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Alls in favor? Aye, nays, ahs, ahs. Consider to discuss to act upon approving a new Vettical License for Two Brothers Restaurant LLC, Frank and Johnny's in the water, located at 743 Putnam Pike, as applied, subject to compliance with all state regulations and local ordinances, and copy the resale, retail license permit. We're all in order with that. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Any not alls in favor? Aye, nays, ahs, ahs. Item D, consider to discuss to act upon approving the new entertainment license for Two Brothers Restaurant LLC, DBA, Frank and Johnny's in the water, located at 743 Putnam Pike, as applied, subject to compliance with all state regulations and local ordinances. And I believe we're all set on that also, correct? I'll entertain a motion. Any discussion? Any not alls in favor? Aye, nays, ahs, ahs. Item E, consider to discuss to act approving a new special dance license for Two Brothers Restaurant LLC, DBA, Frank and Johnny's in the water, located at 743 Putnam Pike, as applied, subject to compliance with all state regulations and local ordinances, and we're all set with that? We are. I'll entertain a motion.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Alls in favor? Aye, nays, ahs, ahs. Item 11, consider to discuss to act upon authorizing the police department to purchase through the Rallin Master Price Agreement Arrangement, Agreement, excuse me, at 395, a computer-added dispatch console from Motorola Solutions of Chicago, Illinois, in the amount of $363,401. Chief.
Eric Dolan, Chief of Police, so basically, in 2021, we went over to an 800 radio system, and that 800 radio system allowed us to basically communicate with 15,000 other public service agencies throughout the state. Our old system, we were only able to communicate with each other, maybe switch to another channel, communicate with fire. This allows us to communicate throughout the state, so if we have mutually, from other jurisdictions come on in, we can actually talk to them in, at, during the event. So we did that in 2021, we got all the Motorola radios to do that. We've been using our old system with the telec system, which is basically outdated, and they're not manufactured anymore. It's not keeping up with what we need to do. It'll currently break down randomly, and the only way we know it's broken down is that a officer on the street will say, you're not hearing our transmission. So we call the station by phone, we got to go into a switch, it's almost like rebooting a computer, it's just not safe. So we've been trying to get this new system, this new dispatch, this new Motorola, basically, dispatch system since 2022, and the fire chief can talk a little bit more about what it's going to do, but that currently is the best system, the most up-to-date system that there is, and it's going to work flawlessly with our current Motorola radios.
So the $64 question, who's paying for this?
Well, who's paying for it? It's become, coming out of the Bryant Police and Fire Public Safety Fund.
How much is that in account right now?
I would have to defer to the town manager.
I believe it's about $750,000.
Are those funds committed?
No.
Otherwise?
No.
No? There's no plan to expense in the future?
No. What, that one, that account was set up, was set up for police and fire, capital projects that goes with the old Bryant agreement. So we already, we had taken $100,000 out for the radio system, we got a $200,000 grant for fire, and then this will take, will be another $363 out of that account.
I'm sorry, you say eight what? Eight fifty-one?
It was seven, we had about $750,000 left in that account.
Thank you.
The, the new pilot agreement we have with Bryant, is the money that Bryant pays for that agreement going to go into this account or is it going to go somewhere else?
No, it's sep, it's separated from this account. It was, this year was all applied to income, revenue for the budget.
So that could just going to go into the budget?
Yeah, unless it's taxed.
So this account is going to be closed?
Yes.
After this year?
Now, well, I don't know if it's after this year, but after all the money is spent.
Well, once the money is spent.
Correct.
Now, you've been looking at this since 2022, is that correct?
Yes.
Was this in our capital improvement program budget?
I don't, I think it was.
It's been a goal objective of the agency since 2022, that we've been asking or putting in one of our objectives for the, for the years. It's, it's one of those things that, you know, I understand it is quite a bit of money, and time has come that we're just going to fail with this current system, and we're not going to have it repaired, and we're going to be out of sorts at that particular time. So it, it's keeping up with what communication technology is, and it's assisting us, but we have been, ever since we purchased those radios, which in itself was an expense, this was the next thing.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not questioning the need for it, what I'm questioning is the accounting.
The accounting for?
Without having a capital plan right in front of me, I'm not sure if Chief Saints of Herhead had that. And I know radio equipment, we were trying to get you upgraded on the 800 for a few years now, so the console also may, may have been in that, but I don't have the book in front of me.
I don't have that answer at this time.
Yeah, I mean, what about, what about the budget? Would this be a capital item that we include in our budget? I mean, even though it's coming from that fund, would this be in our budget? No?
Well, if we didn't have the money, then we would have had to appropriate capital funds to, to work towards this project, but everything that's come out of the Bryant account so far has been a capital, came in front of the town council, and then the money just came out of that fund, so it really didn't go through the budget and come out.
Yeah, that, that's something I would like to, that, to have the Budget Board look at. I know that's how it's been, always been done, but I'd like to have the Budget Board take a look at that because under the charter, all of our expenditures are supposed to be disclosed through the budget process, and I know that hasn't been done for a number of years, so, you know, maybe we could take a look at how this is done in the future. Especially, you know, expenditure of this magnitude, it really doesn't show up anywhere. And I know we have the Bryant fund, but that's still, you know, that's, that belongs to the town, that money, that's money that, you know, is revenue, town revenue. So I think that, you know, in the future, we have to have a better, better accounting. I know we skipped a year on the capital improvement program, so we really need to get that up to date, and I don't know if this is in there or not, I did not see it in there, I could have missed it, I suppose, but.
Yeah, it may not be, but also remember, many of the items that came out of the Bryant account, I'll give you an example, when we got the grant for the, we bought the same console at the fire department, we were given a $200,000 grant from REMA that had to be spent within a certain timeframe, and then we put, you know, we, we were able to do it. So although I agree with you, there's, there's going to be times where other money's going to come along, and you'd have to make a decision, it's not in the budget, but there's money there, so that would be the only time that there might be a problem with that.
So when was the last time something from the, for the fire, and I'll pose this question to the chief and the town manager, for the fire and the police department was purchased with funds from this account, and what was it?
The, the Motorola radio console that we have at the fire alarm dispatch center.
Do we know it was a similar, off the top of my head?
It was almost the same amount, same amount.
That was last year, right? Or some, recently?
Yes, it was about a year ago.
Yeah.
And $200,000 came from a grant, and the remaining balance, I think, was about $117,000, if I recall, came out of the account.
Is that something you knew ahead of time that you needed?
No, because we didn't know we were getting the grant. REMA reached out to us because we're a regional control center, and they wanted us to get upgraded on our console, so they offered us the money if we could match the remaining portion.
So it just came about, it wasn't like a need, right?
Yeah, we weren't even expecting it until the, the director of REMA had some communications money left over.
Thank you. Chief, do you, do you recall the last time something for the police department was?
We do, I do not recall, unless it was some of the 800 radios we received, I'm not, I'm not 100% sure.
So, and you said this system started malfunctioning in 2022?
As soon as we did, so it was basically, you're, you're trying to adapt another product to a current product, and we were able to do it, three different technologies to kind of make it work, and shortly after, we started using the radios, maybe eight months to a year, it started to have the fails, and the fails were just, as I stated, it would just shut down. So it was like putting a computer on and off to get it going again, and our communications were back up. It's become more current, it's happening more, it's happening, I could probably tell you, once a week it's happening, that we're having it, and I couldn't give you an exact time because there's nothing that would let us know it's going to happen. And then trying to call for service, there's limited to nobody, it's all aftermarket people that are working on this because they don't have the product anymore.
Once again, I'll, I'll agree with Councilman, I totally get the need. If this wasn't, I don't want to say last minute, but if this wasn't so urgent, would this have been paid for from this account anyway?
Yeah, I would say yes, and it's been something that we've been talking about for some time.
Oh, you have?
Yes, it hasn't, it's been well over two years.
Yeah, two years.
Yeah, that we've been talking about, that we need to get in this direction, we need to find the funds and, and move on from there. Unfortunately, my radio person, as the chief knows, Gary, wasn't able to make it tonight, he could tell you the whole, the whole process of how we were trying to get here, and we're here now.
Chief, we believe you.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion.
But keep in mind, from this day forward, these items have to be in the capital improvement program, and we're working on the next one that is going to be before the capital committee.
Absolutely.
And I'm sure you're putting all that stuff together
Sure.
For the next 20 years.
20 years from here.
But the, the real relevant stuff is the first, is the five, next five years.
Right.
Because we need to plan ahead, make sure we have enough money, especially now that there isn't going to be this account anymore, that, you know, because the Bryant money is becoming part of our tax money that we get in, so it's much more important now, and especially with this kind of expenditure.
Sure.
It's, it's a big amount.
Understood, yep, absolutely.
When would this come in? When would this come in?
Well, this, I believe it's sometime in June, this, 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 this number is good till, so as soon as we do the ordering, I don't think it's going to be a long process, you know, once, once we've been ordered.
Not like the pocket truck.
Four months or so, when we ordered ours.
To get it in.
Okay, thank you.
Entertain a motion. Any more discussion? Any not alls in favor? Aye, nays, ahs, ahs. Thank you, Chief. Item B, consider to discuss to act upon authorizing the town manager to enter into contract to OM-NIA Natural Cooperative Purchasing Alliance with the Dell Technologies for three years to support maintenance on data center equipment in the amount not to exceed $48,509.21 to be funded by the town's computer services account.
Good evening, Council, Dave Duchiano, IT Director. This is just to extend the current support and maintenance contract for the servers here at Town Hall. This would cover everything for three more years, and at that point, we'd probably be looking at refreshing the servers with something new.
Any questions? Do we have a budget, a budget item for this?
Yes.
Spread out over the three years?
So every week, every year is a computer technology item.
Right.
These kind of projects come out of that budget line.
Okay, and what's the computer service account? What is that?
That's it, that's the account, that's in the budget.
Okay, it's a budget account, but it's really not a separate fund or anything like that, is it?
No, it's part of the operating budget.
Any more discussion? I'll entertain a motion. You have a second?
Second.
That's it? All in favor? Aye, nays, ayes, ayes. Item C, consider discuss act upon adopting a resolution to support and amending the general law forty-four three entitled property subject to tactation to add and exempt for people with paraplegic sponsored by myself. Chris?
Good evening. This, um, this new amendment that I, I were proposing would, um, well, we have, let's start back a notch, we have a disability exemption now, um, but you need to be disabled according to social security and not be able to work. I've come across situations where there is a person with paraplegia or quadriplegia who does work and unfortunately they don't qualify for the, the current disability exemption we have. I looked around, uh, town North Providence has a similar statute where they, they give an exemption. The person has to also have modified their home in, in such a way to adapt to that, their disability. So, um, I just kind of wanted to mimic that and I think this would be good to do. I don't think it's gonna be a very big fiscal impact. I spoke to North Providence, they have about seven people on it. So, um, even if it was a couple hundred dollars, two, three hundred dollars, it's very, very small amount of money.
When will this go into effect, Chris?
Excuse me?
When will this go into effect?
Well, we would put, this would actually need a, an ordinance eventually. So this resolution would get the, the proposed amendment to the general assembly, they would pass the, the statute, and then between now and the next December thirty-first, we'll pass the ordinance and then it could apply to the, to the next year's tax bill.
Could you be more specific on exactly what the tax credit is? Is it?
Well, we, we're gonna
The entire tax?
No, God, no. No, it's a, it's gonna be an exemption similar to the disability. The ordinance will call out that exact amount at that time.
I see.
Um, but, you know, I would, I would propose the same two hundred fifty dollars that the disability exemption gets, but again, we could, that, that's not necessary at this point. We're just going, we're going to the general assembly to have the authority to implement said exemption. And then we would codify it at the local level with the amount and the qualifications and things like that.
And that'll come back to us?
Yeah, we'd have the public hearing and everything and do it, you know, and pass the ordinance locally. But first, we need a enabling legislation because we can't do it locally without this enabling legislation from the state.
Any more questions, Chris?
Yes, um, did this, is it like a story background? Does this come up randomly? Did somebody ask for this? I'm just curious.
Yes, there is a story background, in fact. So, um, it was about a year ago or less than, a resident reached out to me and asked if he could get the disability exemption. I asked a couple of questions and I told him, unfortunately, we can't. And then, so he explained the situation to me and as I thought about it more, it didn't seem really right that, you know, because this guy works, he's not a lot, he's in a wheelchair, he's a quadriplegic, this particular person. So, uh, he's a good teacher, I believe, if I remember correctly. So that's kind of was the impetus for it. So I started thinking about it. I discussed it with Randy, actually, at the time, and, and we thought this would be a good, you know, direction to go in, and now it's finally here in front of you.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion. You have a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Hearing non-holds in favor? Aye, nays, ayes, ayes. Thank you. Thank you, Chris. Item D, consider discuss act upon adopting a resolution to support House Bill fifty-nine fifty-seven and Senate Bill five oh-two, House Bill five-six-eight-nine and House Bill number five-six-nine-oh regarding affordable housing.
Thank you, Mr. President. This resolution, uh, comes out of, uh, these three bills, uh, which are now before the general assembly. Uh, right now, the town of Smithfield, uh, is experiencing pretty much an onslaught of high-density developments, uh, with as many as eleven hundred units that have been proposed because of the density bonuses that are contained in the Low and Moderate Income Housing Act. In our resolution, we note that several of the developments would be built in areas previously designated as farmland or low-density residential areas that have insufficient roads and infrastructure to support these developments. Several of these housing developments are proposed in areas that are prone to flooding. Because Smithfield has not met its ten percent affordable housing goal, uh, we are subject to this, this, uh, low and moderate income statute. Uh, and so these bills are designed to help us regain some of our, some control over our zoning and planning, uh, to prevent the impacts of these developments. House Bill number five-nine-five-seven and its companion Senate Bill number five-oh-two would allow a city or town that has not met its ten percent affordable housing goal to be considered to have affordable housing consistent with local needs. And, and what we want to do with that bill is to substitute that ten percent requirement with an inclusionary, inclusionary zoning ordinance that requires all housing developments of ten units or greater to include at least fifty percent low or moderate income housing units. This is a bill that, um, I wrote and, uh, was introduced by Representative Paul Santucci in the House and Senator David DeCoyen in the Senate. Both of them have been tremendously helpful with this. They both actually testified, uh, in the housing committees, uh, municipal committees on these bills. Uh, and, um, I, I just wanted to thank them, uh, for, uh, for their support and for the excellent work on this. House Bill number five-six-eight-nine would define a multifamily housing project as more than sixty units, uh, in a municipality with less than thirty-five thousand residents. Uh, this bill was, uh, introduced in the House by Representative Falella of Johnston, uh, and our town council president, John Tesoni, testified in favor of this bill. Finally, House Bill number five-six-nine-oh repeals the entire act, um, that was introduced by Representative Portroche. Uh, the, the chances of that passing are not good, I, let me tell you that. So, um, what we've tried to do here, uh, with the bill that, um, I asked to be introduced, uh, is to try to come up with some kind of compromise, uh, so that we're just, we're not inundated, uh, and that we have, uh, some kind of regain, uh, regaining of our control over our own zoning. The process we have right now results in the, the half-hazard location of these mega condo developments. That's really not the solution to our housing, uh, housing prices. The most effective solution would be for the state housing officials to meet with each city or town and devise a plan for the construction of LMI, low and moderate income units tailored to that community, through projects of suitable size and locations for that particular community. Our present course of half-hazard mega condo developments is going to cause greater traffic congestion, a greater strain on our resources, and it's not gonna result in the creation of sufficient number of homes for our low and moderate income families. The condos they're building now, I don't even know how you can call a four hundred thousand dollar condo unit, uh, low and moderate income. Uh, so, um, again, I'd like to thank, um, Senator DeCoyen and Representative Santucci and President Tesoni for their efforts.
I'll entertain a motion, councilman.
Um, I move that, uh, passage, this, uh, resolution, which I just outlined.
Second.
Any more discussion?
You just need to change the date on here to the twentieth.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye, nays, ayes, ayes. Item E, consider discuss act upon approving a tax abatement in the amount of two hundred and five dollars and five cents.
It's just my very last appeal of the year, small adjustment we made on a real estate property through the appeal process.
Any discussion? I'll entertain a motion. You have a second? All in favor? Aye, nays, ayes, ayes. Consider discuss act, item number F, consider that, discuss act upon adopting a resolution in support of amending the general laws forty-five-five-twenty point one-six entitled Smithfield Property Tax Classification and Reevaluation.
Chris Les, Tax Assessor, um, this, this is gonna take a little bit of explanation. It's a little finance-y kind of tax policy type situation. So the last couple of rebows, we saw a very large increase in residential property values and a very moderate increase in commercial property tax, uh, assessed values. The current, the current overarching statute that kind of controls our tax rates gives us the, um, we are only allowed to have one rate be fifty percent more than the other rate. When I did the rebound three years ago, our rates were seventeen dollars and eighteen dollars approximately, so there was room to get a, a bigger spread. So I spread them to about forty percent. The commercial was forty percent more than the residential. And when that, when all that residential went up like that, we were able to, to spread the burden out evenly and not have it all go to residential. This year, the same exact thing happened, except I'm already at the forty percent, so I moved it to the fifty percent. And what's ended up happening is that the residential levy is increasing and the commercial levy is flat or even actually decreasing a bit. Um, we can't, we can't spread that burden out properly with the current limitations in, in statute. So what this, what this statute proposes, proposes to do is it kind of disassociates the two rates from each other. There's no more connection between the rates. So this way, when, when, when one class goes at a higher increase than another, then they don't get a bigger increase on their taxes. That's not the purpose, that's not how it should be. Commercial and residential pretty much never move in lockstep, and so tying the rates together is not really a, a practical thing to do. So, um, it, it's not gonna make any difference this year because it won't be effective until the following year. But what this will allow us to do is, is we, next year, instead of just moving those rates at the same levels, we can actually raise the commercial rate without raising the residential rate at the same amount, possibly even hold the residential rate, we could discuss that in, in budget next year. But without this in place, what's gonna happen is it's continuously gonna shift that burden over to the residential because of the, the market forces. Market forces are pushing residential up, not so much in commercial. So holding those rates at the same ratio is, is just, it's shifting that burden. So the, the, the purpose of this, and I did go over this with, with Pat Buckley and, um, and also with Anthony, and we, we feel that this language in here will effectuate what we need to do.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? I'll entertain a motion.
I, I think this is a great idea because, uh, you know, we want to have the budget board take a look at our, uh, rates. Uh, I think they're gonna take a look at our revenue, uh, you know, in between budget seasons and, and see, you know, how, how it's all working and if it's appropriate. And this will give some more flexibility to the town as well.
Yeah, exactly. We need the flexibility to, to ensure that the residential doesn't have to take the entire tax increase or a bigger piece of the tax increase than commercial. It should be, it should be even. And this will give us a chance to even that out next year and in future years.
Good job, Chris. Any other questions or concerns? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
You have a second? Any more discussion? Hearing non-holds in favor? Aye, nays, ayes, ayes. Item G, consider, item G, consider and discuss act upon acceptance of an application from Churchill and Banks and Companies LLC to amend section nine point three of the Smithfield zoning ordinance entitled Putnam Pike Esmond Street Plan Development District and refer it to the planning board for advisory opinion. I'll entertain a motion. Any more discussion? Hearing non-holds in favor? Aye, nays, ayes, ayes. Item number twelve, public comment. Anyone has a public comment?
Good afternoon, President Sonny, Town Council. I appreciate you guys hearing me today. My name is Dan Kiesler. I am a resident of Smithfield for about sixteen years now. Uh, I've come today to speak to you about, uh, something I'm sure you're all aware of, the assault weapons ban that the, uh, state is proposing, putting in place currently. We've had thirteen towns as of last night. Charlestown passed a resolution to, uh, not approve of this ban. And, uh, I'd like to ask that we at least put it before the council for public discussion for the next meeting. And the reasons that this is important, I believe, to our town is it has the potential to be a, a resource burden and a financial burden because there is no federal mandate against assault weapons. Our town, should people comply with this order, should it become law, will be responsible for cataloging and storing and maintaining these firearms that are turned in, in a secure, climate-controlled environment. And the reason they'll have to keep them is because there is no federal mandate. And we believe that there's currently one case before SCOTUS that has underwritten associatory, but there are also four more cases that in the next few months will hit the Supreme Court. The likelihood of them taking up one of these cases is very, very strong. And we believe that under the current makeup of the federal government and our Supreme Court, that the, these types of bans will be overturned. So then our town will be responsible for returning the property in the condition that, that they received it. And I'll just give you an example for myself. I have rifles that are valued at over four thousand dollars, and I would expect them to be returned in the exact condition that they got. So there could be potential litigation if there's property lost, if there's property rusted or damaged. And I believe it would be a worthwhile consideration and, and to protect the, the citizens of Smithfield. There are many, many people that are active in the two A community here. I represent ParabellumProvisions.org. We're a nonprofit in the state. Uh, we're a training organization. We do free community service firearm safety classes at Smithfield Sportsman's Club every month. We fill three classes a month for, for citizens and residents, and they're full. So there are a lot of people in, in this community that, uh, support our Second Amendment, and I'd like to see our town council, if, I'd like to see you come out against this on the basis of the fact that it's not constitutional period. But it, it will have an impact on our city financially if, if it passes into law. And I'd like to ask that you at least bring it up for discussion in the next meeting.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? Yeah, please, come to the podium and state your name, please.
I'm getting excited here. Joe Varon from Varon Drive. Uh, it seems that, uh, the town of Middletown is going to be taking up, uh, I think it's Middletown, they're taking up the, basically what Tiverton has proposed. And what I've done here is I've got a few copies I'd like to leave with you, again, for consideration, as this gentleman said. There's a whole lot here that's wrong with this bill, a lot. And, uh, quite honestly, it's being, it seems as though it's, it's being put forth by a lot of, lot of state money, by a lot of groups that just don't like guns. We don't have a problem in this state, so they're looking to solve a problem we don't have. And there's a whole bunch of stuff that goes along with it. There's an illegal registry that they just want to cast aside and have us all register firearms. So I'd like to leave these with you, just as a guide, and, uh, hopefully you'll be able to, uh, do something with them for the next meeting.
Mr. Varon, can you give them to the board, please?
I will.
Thank you so much. Anyone else?
Thank you for your time. My name is Jeff Gross. I'm a Gloucester resident. I have numerous friends and family in Smithfield. Uh, I'm also a writer for New England Outdoors. Why I'm, uh, bringing this up to you folks? In two thousand eight, the Heller decision ruled that weapons in common use cannot be banned. Bruin, another Supreme Court decision, twenty-ten, ruled that all firearm laws must follow text, history, and tradition. Possession of AR-15s implicates the texts of the Second Amendment. Therefore, the government must show that there was a historical analogous log, uh, excuse me, law from seventeen ninety-one. There are no laws in seventeen ninety-one that banned any firearms whatsoever. Therefore, by definition, the state of Rhode Island is, uh, forcing unconstitutional laws upon, uh, upon the citizenship. In twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three, and twenty-twenty-four, yours truly told them directly at the Senate and House Judiciary hearings, these bills, anything basically under eleven forty-seven is unconstitutional. So they're just doing whatever they please. Uh, I'd like to see a larger number of towns stand up and say, we've had enough of the unconstitutional laws, hence that's why I'm here addressing you folks. I hope you'll take this into ser- serious consideration. Thank you.
Wait, don't leave, I have a question.
Sure.
Are you involved with the NRA?
I am a member of the NRA. I am not a, uh, uh, what do you call it? I am a member of the NRA. I am not a, what do you call it? Thank you. Yeah, officer or-
No, no. I, I, my, my question is, is that do you think, if in fact, the General Assembly does pass this ban, that the NRA will oppose it and take it to court?
Well, to go a little, one step further, there is more than just the NRA out there. I'm a member of the Second Amendment Foundation, National Association of Gun Rights, Firearms Policy Coalition, and Gun Owners of America. Right now, I have the SAF's ear if they, if the state of Rhode Island does pass these laws. Further, I'll call it the way, I'll call it the way it is. I have been in contact directly with President Trump, Pam Bondi, and our mate Dylan, and asked them to intervene in the state because the unconstitutional laws have gotten out of hand. And I've asked them specifically, as well as numerous other Rhode Island gun owners, to, for them to investigate the State House, prosecute the State House, and if deemed necessary, incarcerate those who are violating our Second Amendment civil rights. I hope that answers your question.
It does. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else?
Good evening. I'm Glenn Gresko. Most of my life resident of Smithfield, still a resident of Smithfield. I'm nobody, but I'm a resident. I believe all the people at the State House, first of all, let me say, I'm in support of what these last few gentlemen's, that's, that's why I'm here. People at the State House swore an oath to our constitution to protect it, and they're going against it. I believe everybody on this panel swore an oath to protect our constitutional rights. I also agree, some of the stuff they're coming up with is unconstitutional. And I'm in support with the 13 towns. I hope Smithfield's going to be the 14th or one of the next few towns that have this resolution to fight the State House.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Michael Gilmain, Swan Road. I don't have anything really specific that hasn't already been covered today, but I just wanted to say that these laws are unconstitutional, and we don't have the money to fund everything we need to, to support all this to happen. I just wanted to show that I'm here as well to ask you to support a resolution if it would make it to the agenda. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. You have a second?